Thank you. We're going to get started. Okay. Good evening. It's February 24, 2025. This is a regular town council meeting as soon as I find the correct meeting stuff. Um, and included, however, during the regular town council meeting will be a pause for a public forum regarding the Bangs Center. The open meeting law allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present at a meeting location. However, please note that we have more than a quorum in the room tonight. This meeting is accessible in real time by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcast on Amherst Media, Channel Nine. And given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the February 24th regular town council meeting to order at 6:31. I'll call upon each councillor by the name they have indicated they would like to be addressed at that time. Please unmute your mic. And say present and then make sure you might mute it again. We will begin with Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
Councillor Ette.
Present.
Lynne Griesmer is present. Councillor Hanke.
Present.
Bob Hegner.
Present.
Councillor Lord.
Present.
Pam Rooney.
Here.
Councillor Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here, but I'm still trying to log on.
That's fine. We can see you. Thank you. Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Jennifer Taub.
Here.
And Councillor Walker. Not here yet, which I know she's planning to be here. There's no chatroom. And I also just want to mention that we do not have Athena with us this evening. So please be patient with all of us since we're trying to cover all the grounds at once, including Sean Hannan, head of IT, is here to assist us. The order of the agenda is as posted, except we will take an action item 8B, the percent for art. It will not be done tonight. It will be done at a future meeting. In addition to that, since no minutes were able to be added to the packet. Kathy? Okay. No minutes were able to be added to the packet. They will also not be dealt with tonight. We will proceed with the agenda. However, we will take a break at 6:45 for the advertised special town council and finance committee meeting, public forum on appropriations outside the annual budget. That specifically relates to the Bangs Center. During this evening, there will be two public comment periods. One is a special public comment period during the public forum. That will be only as it relates to that issue. And then one general public comment period, which will be later, not much later, but later after the public forum. And that's for any issue you care to speak about. Both the regular meeting and the public forum will use the same Zoom link. I just want to mention a couple of announcements and we're not going to show them on the screen. But we do have a council meeting on March 10th and again on March 24th. The Community Resources Committee will be meeting next on February 27th at four o'clock. The Finance Committee, please correct me, will be meeting on March 4th. Correct, Kathy?
Yes.
At two o'clock. Thank you. GOL will meet on March 11th at 6:30, unless there's a posted meeting prior to that. And TSO will meet on March 6th at 10 o'clock. JCPC is also beginning to meet weekly. It will meet on Wednesday, February 26th at four. And I want to mention that there will be a District Two meeting on Tuesday, March 4th at 6:30 by Zoom. On March 10th, the time of our next meeting, we will gather at nine o'clock AM on the Town Hall steps to read the Town of Amherst proclamation recognizing March 10, 2025 as Tibetan National Uprising Day and March 12, 2025 as Tibetan Women's Uprising Day. Other events are posted on the bulletin board. Given that we have time, I'm going to skip over general public comment and move on to the consent agenda. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Um. These items were selected because it was assumed there would be no controversy. If you want to remove an item, please let me know after I read the motion. And then that does not require a second to move the following items and the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. 6A, adoption of the proclamation recognizing March 10, 2025 as Tibetan National Uprising Day and March 12, 2025 as Tibetan Women's Uprising Day. 9A, approval of town manager appointment of Michael Gallo Okano, Amherst Regional Public Schools School Director of Operations to the Elementary School Building Committee. We are not doing the minutes tonight. Are there any items anybody would like removed? Seeing no hands, I seek a second.
Second.
We will move to a vote. We'll start with Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Councillor Ette.
Aye.
Lynne Griesmer is an aye. Councillor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Councillor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
As Councillor Walker joined us, I don't see her. Okay, she is absent. And Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the proclamation. And I've asked Pat, who was particularly instrumental in adding the Tibetan Women's Uprising Day as part of it this year, to read the last three paragraphs. Pat?
Now therefore, we, the Amherst Town Council, do hereby proclaim March 10, 2025 as Tibetan National Uprising Day and March 12, 2025 as Tibetan Women's Uprising Day. In recognition of the local Tibetan American community's fight for justice for the people of Tibet on this 66th anniversary of the Tibetan National Uprising and Women's Uprising Days. Be it further proclaimed that we, the Amherst Town Council, shall recognize this proclamation by raising the Tibetan national flag from March 10th to March 17th, 2025 to help raise awareness for all residents of Amherst. And be it further proclaimed that the clerk of the Amherst Town Council shall ensure that copies of this proclamation are sent to President Donald Trump of the United States of America. Oh, that's a hard one for me to say. I'm sorry. Massachusetts Senator Edward Markey and Elizabeth Warren. Massachusetts James McGovern, Governor Mara Healy of Massachusetts, the United Nations High Commission for Human Rights in Geneva, Switzerland, and Penpas Searing, the president of the Central Tibetan Administration.
Okay. Thank you. Let me just pause for a moment. And determine if there's anything else we can take care of. Right. Yeah, definitely. We're going to move to action item D, E, and F. And I just want to mention in preliminary to this, there is a memo in the packet. Because we filed these special pieces of legislation with the, through our senator and state representative, all of them were filed in the first, one of them was filed in the first term of the council. And it was carried over to the next term of the legislature. However, the ranked choice voting one does need to be voted again. The other two that are in the packet, one deals with voting rights for and the other one deals with a tax on transfer tax. Those two actually don't need to be voted on, but our state representative and senator have asked us to express our interest in having them refiled. So with that in mind, the first one is, I'll read the motion. It's to petition the General Court for special legislation and to authorize the town council president to sign the letter, Town of Amherst, an act relative to the implementation of elements of the charter for the city known as the Town of Amherst as presented, requesting Senator Joanne Comerford and Representative Mindy Dom petition the General Court for special legislation set forth in Council Order 21-33, an act relative to the implementation of elements of the charter for the city known as the Town of Amherst, provided however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the town council approves amendments to the bill before enacted by the General Court. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there questions from the council? Okay. Seeing none. Then I'm going to begin the vote. Councillor Ette.
Aye.
Lynne Griesmer is an aye. Councillor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker is still absent. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
It is unanimous with 12 in favor and one absent. The second one is to reaffirm the town council's petition for special legislation, an act establishing a real estate transfer fee upon the transfer property in the city known as the Town of Amherst. Is there a second?
Second.
Anna, you initially sponsored this. Is there anything you would like to say at this time?
I co-sponsored it with Mandy and yes, absolutely. So just to reaffirm why I believe this is still relevant, still important. What Mandy and I created, and Mandy, please feel free to supplement, augment as you see fit. What Mandy and I drafted in 2022 was a real estate transfer fee. So to clarify, not a tax, a fee. And even though with the passage of the Affordable Homes Act, there is an element of a transfer fee. Ours is different because it addresses Amherst's needs, which are unique. As we all know, right? We don't necessarily have the same type of luxury property sales that Boston, Martha's Vineyard, Nantucket see. We see a different type of property transfer happening. So this transfer fee would allow the town, doesn't require us to, but would allow the town to impose a 2% transfer fee on select properties in town. It would be, basically the bill kind of puts it all out there and then creates a million exemptions so that we're really only targeting those those transfers that we were seeking to target. So it imposes a blanket 2% transfer fee and then exempts, for example, all owner occupied homes, all homes for under 100 or 200% of the median price. The bill is written so that we as a town could decide what those exemptions would be. The current Affordable Homes Act has the floor so high that Amherst, it's almost not even worth the cost it's going to take to manage that type of fee in this town. Whereas our proposed fee, for example, in 2021, would have brought in about $1.4 million for our community, which was, we talked about, to be split between affordable housing, capital stabilization, and, and general fund. If I'm looking back at a memo that I, Mandy and I wrote very, very long ago. So I would ask, that was my very, very brief overview. Essentially, ours is different than what the state currently has. So I believe that we should maintain it's keep, keep putting it out there, even if it doesn't pass, to share the message that what has been created only suits a very limited number of communities in the Commonwealth and it doesn't help Amherst to move towards our affordable housing goals. That specific part isn't necessarily helping Amherst. Mandy, anything to add?
Nope, you covered it.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we're going to move to a vote. Griesmer is an aye. Councillor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
No.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
George Ryan.
Aye.
I'm sorry, it's Councillor Ryan. Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker is still absent. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye, sorry.
Councillor Ette.
Aye.
The vote is 11 in favor, one opposed, and one absent. George? You're recording votes with me, right? I'm going to finish this section up. The next one is to affirm the town council's petition for special legislation and act authorizing extending local voting rights for lawful permanent residents residing in the city known as the Town of Amherst. Is there a second?
Second.
Pat, you were one of the main sponsors on this. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Certain non-citizens were permitted to vote in federal, state, and local elections in 33 states between 1776 and 1924. Granting the right to vote to non-citizens was a common incentive among US territories and new states to attract workers and families to populate their lands. Contrary, though, to the dominant narrative about consistent expansion of democracy and political participation in the United States, the history of immigrant suffrage provides a more accurate lens to expose a recurring pattern that runs through the history of American voting rights, one step forward and two step back.
Microphone, please, Pat?
I wasn't planning to speak, so I'm a little nervous. We are asking the legislature to allow us to have non-citizen voting here in Amherst. And this would be 18, people who are 18 years or older who reside in Amherst and who have legal status. I have neighbors who are from Romania. And they are the primary example of why this should go through. They have land that they own and family in Romania. They bought a house here in Amherst. They're having their first child in March. And they pay taxes. They are affected by decisions of the council and other bodies in town. And they have no say, no voice in anything that happens. If this were to pass, we would be able, they would be able to participate in our democracy in municipal elections, not in state or federal elections. So I'm hoping that this will go through and I'm grateful to Representative Dom and Senator Comerford, who really kept this alive for.
Are there any questions from the council? Yes, Pam Rooney.
Thank you. Can you just clarify that legal status could mean a green card? So somebody could be a renter, but they have a green card and they are.
They don't have.
Yep.
We got rid of that a long time ago.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm going to move to a vote. Councillor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Councillor Ryan, I'm sorry. Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker is absent. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Lynne, she actually is here.
Ah. I'm sorry. Alicia, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Lynne.
And will you be voting on this and how do you vote?
Sorry, I just joined, so I do not know what we're voting on. So I, can I just be passed for now?
Yeah, we'll just abstain. Okay. Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Councillor Ette.
Aye.
And Lynne Griesmer is an aye. So it's 11, I'm sorry, it's 12 in favor and one abstention. Thank you. We're going to now take a pause and move on to the special town council and finance committee meeting. It's a public forum on appropriations outside the annual budget. Since we've already gone through all of the preliminaries, I'm not going to take our time up with that. But I am going to ask two things. First of all, if you are here to make public comment on this item, please make sure you have signed up on the appropriate sheet over on the table over here. If you're here for general public comment, there is a different sheet. Okay? If you are in the audience on Zoom and you would like to make public comment with regard to this appropriation regarding the Bangs Center, please raise your hand at this time. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Kathy, before we go on, I would like you to go ahead and call the Finance Committee to order, including the non-voting residents.
Yes, I call the Finance Committee to order and I want to call on Tom Porter, a resident member, to make sure he can hear and we can hear him. Tom?
Tom Porter, can you hear us? Please unmute.
Yes. Hi, Tom. Can you just say you can hear us and we can hear you? So far?
We see your name.
We see your name and we saw you unmute, but right now we're not hearing you.
You probably need to turn your mic up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I had to unBluetooth. Sorry about that.
Thanks. Thank you, Kathy. With that, we're going to have a brief presentation. I'm going to call on Bob Perrant. And working with him tonight are Rob Mora and Dave Zomack. And I believe, Sean, you have the slides for this, correct? Okay. Please go ahead.
Thank you. And Sean, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the slides, that would be great. Little bit of background, we started working on this project in the middle of this last summer, in the summer of 2024. And the reason we focused on the Bangs Center is it's a very, as you know, a very heavily utilized building by a number of different town departments. And it's a building that we felt with a bit of additional reinvestment could continue to serve the town for many, many more years. It is a solid building. It does lack a couple of items that it should have going forward, and that's one of the things I'll be talking about. But it is, it seemed well worth the investment in order to continue to serve the departments that are based there and potentially in the future even better serve them than they are served today. So Sean, are the slides handy? Thank you. If you could back up to the beginning. Thank you. So as I mentioned, it's a very solid building, but it does lack some systems that you'd expect to have in a, in a modern public building. It does not currently have a sprinkler system. So that's one item that we felt needed to be added to the building in order to continue to serve the town well for the next many decades. It has an antiquated fire alarm system. It was subject to a accessibility audit a couple of years ago that identified a number of deficiencies that need to be corrected. And one comment that we got consistently across all the departments and all the users when we interviewed them as part of the needs analysis was there are significant comfort issues across the building, heating and cooling issues. That as we dug further and further into the existing system, we understood that there are some deficiencies in the existing system and there are definitely some ways to make that existing system work better. It also is a system that has not been touched in any meaningful way in over 30 years. We then, as part of the current project, giving all the uncertainty in the bidding climate these days and the desire to implement some type of improvements in function to the building. We did identify a few modest improvements that might be able to be made within the current funding allocation that would improve the the layout and the use and the function of the building to its users. And those are the items that identified as number five. They would be bid as ad alternates and depending on what the results of the bid would be, they may or may not be included within the scope of the project. So if I could go to the next slide, please. This slide presents, shows you the basement level plan. There, as part of the current project, we're not proposing any improvements other than the HVAC sprinkler system and security system upgrades to the lower level. Next slide. I mentioned the concept of ad alternates items that we could, we could, we would bid as part of the project and we could decide to include if funding was available. This slide indicates three of those. Starting at the, actually, starting in the middle. We identified and there was a desire to try to locate the nurse's office in a, in a more public setting, in a more useful location. The alternate that you see circled there would be a new nurse's office. The alternate that you see on the bottom left-hand corner would be a new restroom facility located joining the multipurpose room where the current nurse's office is located today. So those two would have to go hand in hand. The nurse's office would have to be relocated first. And if it was, then the restroom could, or if desired, could be constructed. The third alternate you see on this slide on the first level plan would be building out the balance of the first floor to serve the senior center, which would then require relocation of the health department up to the second floor. Which is what you then see if I can, we can shift to the next slide. The next slide shows a concept of what the, the second floor could look like. The space would require some interior modifications. And we recognize that conference room needs are a need that were expressed by many different users. So we flagged that as a potential improvement that we could make on the second floor. These are relatively modest improvements. We're not, we understand they're not making any big changes. But if there is funding available, would like to try to move ahead with, with one or more of these improvements. Next slide, please. And looking forward, the first thing we did as part of this project is we had our architect and their design team complete a needs analysis of the total facility and all of the departments in the facility. They interviewed every single department. They came up with a tabulation of desired uses. And what you see here, these six items are six items that could be implemented in the future subject to the availability of funding. If and when some of the basic building improvements that we have identified are taken care of, we could then move into future phases of a kitchen renovation, reconfiguration of the full senior center, improved wayfinding, things like that would be part of the overall long-term project if and when funding allowed. But we felt it was important to start with the basics of the building first and get those out of the way. So with that, that's my presentation.
Thank you very much. I have four people who have signed up who are in the audience. I see no hands for those people on Zoom. So we will allow three minutes for public comment. This is public comment particularly as it pertains to the Bangs Center. The first person to make public comment is Jean Horgan. Please come forward and make sure the green light is on. State your name and where you live. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jean Horgan. I'm a resident of Precinct Three and current Chair of the Council on Aging. I'm here tonight on behalf of all these fine people who are holding signs to respectfully request that the $2.8 million appropriation from Free Cash, formerly ARPA money, be approved for the renovation of the Bangs Community Center. As town representatives, it's important you serve as good stewards of our town facilities. The Bangs Center is an old building, which hasn't been updated in decades. The building, as we just heard, doesn't meet current code standards for accessibility and fire standards among a host of other things. The Bangs Community Center houses five different town departments who serve a wide range of populations. It's used by all, from seniors who attend programs and classes coordinated by senior services, veterans who are assisted by the Veterans Office, townspeople of all ages who pick up COVID tests and tick information from public health. DEI, which hosts a number of different community programs such as the Martin DEI, which hosts a number of different community programs such as the Martin Luther King Breakfast, and then the newest department, Crest, who assists people who are struggling and in need. The Bang Center is also the site for Highland Valley Meals on Wheels Distribution, the Winter Farmer's Market, and a polling site. Clearly, Bangs is a center for our whole community and needs to be renovated and cared for so it can be used for generations to come. Please honor your commitment to spend the $2.8 million from Free Cash to make the Bang Center renovation and upgrade a reality. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Jean. The next person to make public comment is Tricia Montgomery. Please come forward.
Hi, Tricia. I am Trish Montgomery, a resident of the Fifth Precinct Five A, I believe. And I'm here tonight to not duplicate what my colleague just said, but to say that it's clear we won't get to the whole list of things that need to be done to the Bang Center. What I'm here tonight to ask for is that the work continues beyond this fiscal year and that the upgrades will be gradually addressed year after year until the entire list is completed. And with that, I ask that none of the monies of the $2.8 ARPA monies get diverted elsewhere. The community needs these upgrades to this building. And I ask you to keep that in mind, not only this fiscal year, but in fiscal years to come. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Yvette Palanda, and I apologize for not saying your name properly. Please come forward. And please correct what I've just done to your name. Thank you, Yvette.
My name is Yvette Palasine. Palasine, and I just want to share with you that I'm a recent, I just moved into Clark House a couple of years ago. And I'm just, I just feel very enriched by the community. And and also I've availed myself of services and programs at the Bang Center. I am a senior, and so I just am here to voice my support as a community that I feel that I belong there, and I'm just grateful that you heed and pay attention to maintaining, as my colleagues have said, the Bangs place in our town. So thank you so much for being here and listening to the good people of Amherst.
Thanks for joining us. Amber Casey. And please again, correct how I pronounced your name. Oh, wow. Welcome.
I am Amber Casey. I am a resident here for
Please speak to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am Amber Casey. I've been a resident here for 29 years. I've been attending the Senior Center since 2006. And yeah, I love it there. I have enjoyed all the travels and all the classes and everything that we're able to do there. It's such an important edifice for the town of Amherst. I think every consideration should go toward renovating it and and making it what it should be for our joy. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. We do have time for additional public comments. Our charter requires that we have public comment equal to the amount of time that we spend setting the table and making presentations. Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment with regard to the Senior Center? And the Bang Center, actually, Bang Center. Thank you. Adrian Treasi, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Thank you, Lynn. My comment was for another public comment period that was not related to the Senior Center.
It's actually for a different time then, okay?
Thank you. Sorry.
No problem. Are there other comments from people either on Zoom or in the audience here in the town room? Please come forward. State your name and generally where you live.
Hi, so yeah, spontaneously here. My name is Melanie Rose. I've lived in Amherst since 1995. And I moved to the Clark House in '22. And I think certainly so much is going on these this time between the library and our fire station needing more space. And now we're talking about the Bang Center, which has been a real center for a lot of the reasons the very first speaker mentioned, all kinds of things going on. So and certainly for speaking for the Senior Center, you know, the upgrades that they need. I was interested in leading a class last year there. And there was no room available. So I'm not sure if the renovations, I wasn't seeing the actual addition of rooms, but I'm not sure, just upgrading the entire space in the Senior Center. But the building itself just seems, you know, when I first moved here, folk dancing was happening down in some big room in '95. I remember that and getting my COVID shots and, you know, just done a lot of things in the building. And so it just seems like such an important focal point for Amherst. So I'm totally 100% for also what Pat said of keeping the money and not diverting it, you know, and really getting things going. So thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Are there any other comments either from online about the public forum and specifically the Bang Center or from anybody in the room? Ted, come forward, please.
Hi, my name's Ted Moan. I've been in, lived in Amherst since, on and off since 1973. So one of the things, and I have a background at the university in facilities. The Bang Center is tired. It is a tired building. The other thing that is to me just sad is it's not accessible. It's not only do you have automatic doors that don't work, you have places where there should be other automatic doors, but the other thing that hopefully in this plan will be looked at is accessible parking around the building. There were maybe four spaces for a senior center and a health center. So just to think about that as part of the overall project and it's time.
Thank you for joining us, Ted. If there's no other comments, we're going to, I'm going to now turn back to Kathy Shane as Chair of the Finance Committee. And Kathy, would you please just share with us the recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Yes, the Finance Committee considered unanimously supported a motion that recommend that the Town Council approve Financial Order FY 25-05.
Okay. And is there any reason that the Finance Committee wants to reconsider its recommendation?
Lynn, I'd like to just say a few more words about this.
We will have more time during the vote.
Okay, so just as Bob Perrant remarked, but you're going to find it in the Finance Committee report. What we heard during our back and forth discussion is this investment is worth it. It's a building that unlike DPW and FIRE is solid. And so the renovation of the internal systems will give it years of life and flexibility. So it is not going to, at this time, yield additional space for seniors, but it potentially will in the future. So some of the comments back and forth on what the systems will do are in our report and are in the very thorough background work that was done by town staff.
And so would you please go ahead and move to adjourn the Finance Committee?
I move to adjourn the Finance Committee.
A second.
Okay, would you take a role?
Should I call on all the councilors as well?
I think if, I'm going to call on all the councilors as the overall. So if you just do Tom Porter, that's fine.
Okay, so Tom Porter, I'm calling on you to, in terms of adjourning the Finance Committee, because the rest of the members are all on the council. Tom?
Okay, actually, Counselor Hanke is suggesting you do need to go ahead and call on everybody.
I will call on all members of the council of the Finance Committee.
On the Finance Committee.
Of the Finance Committee. amended instructions. I got it. Bob Hegner.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Kathy Shane is a yes, and I don't. Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Tom Porter, who is a resident member. And I saw him, his lips move saying yes.
Okay.
And, okay, Kathy is a yes.
Thank you. Adjourn. I'm going to move to adjourn the public forum for the council. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll start with Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Ernie.
Yes.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Aye.
Devlin Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
It's unanimous. We're going to move immediately back into the regular council meeting and pick up where we left off. Which coincidentally is this particular item on the agenda. So oh, yes, I'm sorry. It's general public comment. Thank you. Hold on. If you are in the audience and you would like to make general public comment, please make sure you have signed up over here. And if you are on Zoom and you would like to make public comment, please raise your hand, your hand at this time. Did you not sign up? Okay, fine. Thank you. We have two people on Zoom and two people in the audience. I'm going to, again, we're going to have three minutes for public comment. And if you and we'll just begin with Sarah Johnson. Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Sarah Johnson. I live in District Three. I have a second grader at Crocker Farm Elementary School and a preschooler in the preschool program at Crocker Farm. I am also a first grade teacher at Wildwood Elementary and was notified that if the proposed budget cuts are made final, I will not be able to return to my position next school year. I have lived in Amherst for about five years now and have paid property taxes for the entirety. My family actually moved here because the district had a great reputation. We decided that the very high property taxes would be worth it to have our children in Amherst Public Schools. When I was offered my position at Wildwood Elementary, I was excited to be able to teach in my own community and be closer to my family. I'm not actually here to discuss how the budget cuts may affect me. I'm here to talk about my concerns for my own children in Amherst Public Schools. The proposed cuts reduce the number of special education teachers that we have across the district. Not only is this a vulnerable population of students, but this will have a ripple effect across schools. You can ask any teacher and they will tell you how student needs have increased. There are more dysregulated students that need specific supports. These are less likely to be put in place with less staff and special education programs. This means that teachers will be stretched more than they already are, and less learning will happen for all kids. With less staff, larger class sizes are inevitable, with less individualized attention for all students. Amherst is known as a place for inclusion, diversity, and acceptance. But what message are we sending when we are willing to lessen support for special education students? These proposed budget cuts discredit what the Amherst community stands for, and I implore you to find a way to keep the staff and programs that are proposed to be cut. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. I'm going to go to Zoom. Martha Hannah, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Martha Hannah from District Five, speaking on behalf of the Amherst League of Women Voters and their Racial Justice Committee. We'd like to invite Town Council members and all the public to join us on Zoom Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM for a conversation with Pamela Young and Philip Avalar, our DEI Department, on DEI Deconstructed. In the present political climate, we believe it is important to reaffirm our basic values and emphasize the importance of DEI in its broadest sense. What does DEI really mean? How is Amherst implementing and supporting DEI? You can register for the program at our website, l w v amherst.org. Recording of the program will be posted on the website afterwards. In the meantime, I would ask each of you to consider the essential meaning of DEI and how you apply this in your council interactions with our residents. So hope you can come Wednesday night. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Martha. I'm going to go to Shannon Kohler. Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Shannon Kohler, and this is, this is Xander Kohler, who is actually a first grade, first grader at Wildwood Elementary School with Ms. Sarah Johnson, who just spoke. We are here, I did not, I did not put together anything official. This is my first time speaking at a Town Council meeting, but I will say that that Ms. Sarah Johnson in Xander's first grade class has been monumental to his teaching and what she has brought to the first grade Wildwood class has been instrumental to Xander's growth, and it would be a big loss to see her leave Wildwood. We're a big supporter of hers and would hate to see Wildwood lose such a great educator, as well as, I mean, so my kids, we all have IEPs. Well, we all, so yes, I have two kids with IEPs and then one with 504, and they benefit greatly from all of the services that they receive. So yes, thank you very much for hearing and for considering our plea and our support of Ms. Sarah Johnson. Do you want to say anything? Can we just say we we love our teacher? We love our teachers.
We hear you. Thank you for joining us. Adriana, Adrian Treasi. Please enter the room. State your name and where you live, approximately where you live.
Thank you, Lynn. This is Adrian Treasi, District Three resident. I want to speak tonight to bring the council's attention to what I believe is a townwide safety issue. It regards buried and frozen fire hydrants. I'm sure you've all read about the early Saturday morning fire that totally consumed a house on Pondview Drive. Fortunately, the family of three, including a fifth grader at Crocker Farm student, were away. They're still hoping that their cat somehow miraculously escaped. First, the good news, our Orchard Valley community has immediately begun responding to the family's immediate needs while they are in very temporary housing, something ensured supply in Amherst. But this is a family in turmoil due to the total loss of their home. And at least in part, and as reported by the Fire Department, due to buried and frozen hydrants hampering the Fire Department's responsiveness. Now, it's my understanding that residents are responsible for keeping our hydrants in front of our homes clear. And of course, able-bodied residents might be capable of this task. But it is a difficult risk for those unable to remove layers of ice and snow. Now, during snowstorms, we see our town crews come along Now, during snowstorms, we see our town crews come along, clearing our roads. But often unwittingly, those same crews plow under those very same hydrants. I ask for a solution to this issue of buried and frozen hydrants. As a matter of fact, hydrants during all of the seasons. The functionality of those hydrants is indeed a townwide safety issue. So in hopes of averting another heartbreaking catastrophe, I bring this issue to my town council. And thank you very much for your time and your attention tonight.
Thank you for joining us, Andrea. Adriana, I'll never get it right, sorry. Allegra Clark, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Allegra Clark, District Two. I was just calling in tonight to, again, voice my supports for the schools and figuring out how we can avoid this epic budget crisis that we're in. Again, the special education is on the line, as are the specials, which is not the first time in the last few years that those positions have been facing cuts. And there are also some mental health positions in the secondary schools that are at risk of being lost. And I just wanted to point out that one of the counselors at the high school did win Western Mass Counselor of the Year. That was just announced today. So I don't want it to be lost on the council, what great work our educators and the others in the schools who are in supportive roles for our children are doing. Again, seeing how this year, my son's class added over 10 students after the enrollment in September. And learning that there were actually 55 net students gained this year in elementary schools. I do have concerns about positions being cut when it does seem like, at least temporarily, there are more students coming in. So I hope that we can figure out how to keep the Amherst schools great for all our students. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Allegra. Elizabeth Patel, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Can you hear me? Okay?
We can.
Thank you. Elizabeth Patel, and I am District Two. I've been living in Amherst for 16 years and teaching in the valley for 20-something, plus count. I'm here to state my support for the schools, as I believe a couple of colleagues, as well as parents of our schools have expressed. You know, we actually moved here to Amherst specifically for our public schools. We have two great children who grew up and graduated from Amherst Public Schools. And the reason why we moved here was because of all of the great programs that we have. And in addition to supporting special needs, as well as diversifying in the arts and music, this is what makes a well-rounded individual, right? We want to have well-rounded individuals in our society so that we help them to learn to how to vote appropriately. Don't you agree? It's really disappointing that every year, it seems that we have to come to the table and ask for money for our schools. Instead of supporting our schools, we're always getting cut, and we have to do more with less. And, you know, it's, I know that for myself, and some of you may have heard this before, there's a lot of us who write grants. We bring money to our schools. That's not in our, that's not in our job description, but we do it because we love the students, we love what we do. And I'm just asking that the town support the schools and, and not just through verbal, but through monetary means. The people should not be getting cut when we're just coming out of, our children have suffered enough in the pandemic, and we're dealing with a lot. The list is long, and we need to not be making cuts. We need to actually add to our programs, is my own personal opinion. But certainly no cuts. So please, support our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. That concludes public comment. We are going to pick up the agenda where we left off before, and that is with the action items. And Action Item 8A is an appropriation and transfer order, FY25-05F. I'm going to give the motion, seek a second, and then ask for comments. The motion is as follows. Having held a public forum on February 24, 2025, with recommendation by the Finance Committee to adopt appropriation and transfer order FY25-05F, an order appropriating funds for a portion of the Town of Amherst Capital Program Bangs Community Center renovation, as shown on Page Nine of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the council? You heard previously from Kathy Shane, who is Chair of the Finance Committee, that this was unanimous recommendation from the Finance Committee. Kathy, did you have anything else you wanted to say from the Finance Committee?
No, I just, I do recommend that people read our report because it's a summary of questions back and forth with the staff. And one of the things we emphasized in the HVAC system, the heating and cooling system is the big share of the costs, that it's a patchwork system that we have right now in the building. But this renovation will put us in the position to potentially go off fossil fuels with a grant, a decarbonization grant. So this is preparing for the future, and it will improve the climate in the building while we're preparing. So we asked a few other questions, but we're very much impressed by the level of thought that went into this, what has been termed a first-phase approach, but it has significant systems improvements in it.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan.
So just seeking a clarification about how this is going to be paid for. My understanding is that the $2.8 million that we're being asked to approve this evening is only enough to meet the basic requirements. The ad alternates will not be able to be acted on, at least in this initial appropriation. And so my understanding is that they would, if that's the case, that funding for them would have to come through the usual JCPC process. Is that correct?
Paul, I'm going to call on you.
Yes, yes, that is correct, Counselor Ryan. And we will be preparing a request through the JCPC process for the next phase, for this fiscal, for the next fiscal year, FY26, that you'll be reviewing come May.
And I would take it also, the proposed improvements, which is the second part of the proposal, the future phase, that too would go through the JCPC process.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Bob Hegner.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to say that I totally support this project. As I'm on the, a member of the Finance Committee, we did hear a very long, we had a long, open discussion about this. This is a building that is vital to the town, and it's used by a lot of different people. It serves a lot of different people. And it's in good shape. It just needs, it needs some upgrades. It's, you know, a little, I think the original building was built in the 1950s, and then the renovation was in the 1970s. So it's been a long time since we've done anything to upgrade this building. This won't do it. The grant that we have, or the ARPA grant, won't get us all the way. But this counselor is committed to seeing it through, seeing the whole project through, and trying to find the money for, for that we need to finish it.
Kathy Shane.
Yes, Bob quickly, Bob Parent quickly went through the budget, but it does have a series of alternates. And so when they go out to bid, it's possible some of the other features will be included, depending on what the bids bring in. But the overall cost of the project is, is well more than double what we're seeing here. So just, you know, in terms of when you, George has asked, or Counselor Ryan has asked, what about next year? I'm, we're going to have very tight capital budgets as we look forward, so, yes. And so one of the things we really appreciated hearing from staff is that things like the boiler, which is gas-fired, potentially can be grant-funded. And this puts us in a position to secure a grant for that. So I think thinking about where grant money can supplement our own capital money is very smart.
Jennifer Taub.
Yeah, this may sound like a crazy question, but I was disappointed that the kitchen, it sounds like that might be fairly far down the line, and I think that's a very, very important for a senior center to have. In addition to possibly obtaining a grant, if there's grants for senior centers, where the kitchen, is that something the community could fundraise for, or the Council of Aging could do? To get us a kitchen sooner than later.
Paul.
Yeah, so the price tag for a commercial kitchen is very high. It's over $1 million. So it's not, it's not an inconsequential amount of money. There are different options available for food preparation areas that are lower price tag. That's, those are things that we still want to explore. Of course, anything can be, we can raise, if people are interested in raising funds for anything, that's always welcome. But I think most, for a successful fundraising effort, you really want to have a defined goal with an outcome that people can feel is achievable. So at this point, a commercial-grade kitchen is outside the scope of the budget, even in the future.
Kathy, you still have your hand up? Okay. Are there any other comments at this time? Before we move to a vote, I want to just make sure that we thank Bob Parent, Rob Morrow, and Dave Zomack for jumping on this issue and doing such a thorough analysis and getting us moving on the basics of improving this building. Thank you so much for that extra, extra work and detail. It was helpful for us. So the motion's been made and seconded. I'm going to move to a vote. I'm going to start with Counselor Lord. Aye. Pam, Pam Rooney.
Yes.
George Ryan. Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Aye.
Anna Devlin Goethe.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Greismer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Excellent. All right. We are going to move, we are skipping Item B, the percent for our, we will be back to you with that in a future meeting, in the not-too-distant future. Meantime, we will move on to HC, which is a proposed amendment to the Town Council Policy on Making Recommendations for Town Council Appointments to Multiple Member Bodies. This is a referral to the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee. I'm going to read the motion, seek a second, and then ask the sponsor of this to make comments. To refer the proposed amendment to the Town Council Policy on Making Recommendations for Town Council Appointments to Multiple Member Bodies by deleting the phrase "for up to six years of consecutive service" in the first sentence, and deleting the second and third sentence in Section Five, "reappointments to the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee with a recommendation to the council by April 7, 2025." Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded? Counselor Hanke, thank you. All right. Counselor Hanke, you brought this forward. Please proceed.
Thank you. My memo basically says it, but I am one that likes consistency. And the council has voted a president for their seventh term. And our, our appointments to multiple member bodies, the document says that basically we won't go beyond six. And so I'm trying to make that consistent with our actual action regarding other votes we've taken that have gone beyond six. So that's the basic reasoning behind this.
Okay. Kathy.
I will be voting against the referral because I do not think this is a necessary change. And linking it to the President of the Council is linking two very different processes. We have in both the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals extremely complex regulations that need to be learned. And one of the reasons the council, actually several years ago, said if you're appointed to a three-year term, if you want to serve for another three years, all things being equal, you would get a second three years. I think that's a good policy because you get a chance to learn, and then you get to use what you've learned. So it doesn't give you a forever pass. And, and to the extent, when a third term comes up, there are no qualified applicants. We could go to three terms. It's permissive. It's not required. And that is a process that makes a lot of sense for both of these. On the other hand, on the President of the Council, we have a choice. People have a choice to run. And if we, as a group of 13, make a decision, if there is more than one candidate, to elect someone, that's quite different than an appointment on a committee that has responsibilities. And we want to have some learning process going on. So I don't think equating them is good. And the way it's written now, we all actually revised it during either my first term or my second term on the council to read the way it does, to give a chance to be on for six years. And I think that is very clear, the way it is written. So I see no reason to revise this. Therefore, I will be voting against referral.
Pam Rooney.
Thank you. The idea of consistency is a good one, and I understand the rationale for, for this. Being on a, being on a committee, Kathy covered some of the ideas, but if you, if you are going into your second three-year term, in some cases, I have seen people on the Planning Board and ZBA who, who were, essentially were asked to re-up a third time. There have been a couple people that have served about nine years on the Planning Board. I would agree that it's, it's very different on the council because, in fact, we are publicly elected, whereas these folks are appointed first by the town manager and currently by the, by the council itself. So I'm, I'm not supporting diminishing their terms, or actually, you're asking to extend them. But I think, I think consideration of roughly six years is, is pretty appropriate.
Counselor Ryan.
So I too will vote against referral. The language that, that is being amended here, proposed to be amended, I was involved, as a number of you were, in crafting this language, and I think we found a pretty good balance. And I'm rather proud of the language between, on the one hand, creating the impression that somehow you get tenure for six years, on the other hand, recognizing experience and expertise. So I think the language is, as it stands, is solid and good. This does seem kind of like apples and oranges. What the, the President's term has to do with this, I don't clearly really understand. So I guess my question to my colleague who's proposed this is, this seems to me, if we want to discuss the term length and what would be sort of term limits, it would be more a matter of rules of procedure that you might want to bring up with the GOL? I mean, we could change, we could look at our rules of procedure, but I have no desire to change this language. And I don't see the connection between the President's term and the multi-member bodies. So I would suggest maybe looking at rules of procedure, if you want to pursue that, term limits, but.
Counselor Ette.
So I appreciate the thoughts, process in bringing this.
Please speak to your mic.
Thank you. Can you hear me? So I appreciate the thought process in bringing this to the council's attention. But I did have a couple of questions for. the counselor who brought this. One is outside of consistency, is there a benefit to this amendment for the multi-member bodies? Because if there is, then we shouldn't really be speaking about consistency. And that brings me to, um, a second question. If we really are concerned about consistency, it may be easier to push for some kind of term limits for presidents. I think that's, um, an easier case to be made in the absence of a benefit to multi-member bodies with this change.
Jennifer Taub.
Thank you. I actually think, um, I wasn't, this is not why I raised my hand, but Counselor Ette, that's, I, I think Counselor Ette's, um, suggestion is an interesting one that we may want to address. But I, I, I will also not be voting to refer this motion to GOL. A part of the way I interpreted it is that we would not be giving any greater credence to someone who's had experience than someone who hasn't. And that doesn't really make sense to me. So that's, that's a part of my concern.
Okay. Are there any other comments from counselors? Counselor Hanke.
I'll just try to respond to a few. Um, I proposed eliminating the ones that referenced six years. That was not an intention to change. I think right now, we don't, we consider current service as an experience issue. I was not intending to eliminate that part, and I don't think I did, um, in my proposal. To Counselor Ette, um, there are good reasons, I know when we instituted this policy, there were good reasons to argue, should there be any limits at all? At the time, we had had some planning board members and some ZBA members that have served over six years. There are certainly other committees under the manager's appointment purview that, that have members who have served well more than six years, um, because of the experience necessary. I think, um, as counselors have seen in serving on the council, there are some things that take a long time to learn. If you have too much turnover, um, you end up with a very new board that, that might be at a disadvantage in something as technical as a zoning. That doesn't mean that six years is, it, it's almost an arbitrary cutoff, I would say. It doesn't necessarily mean that's a good number. It's just, it was where we picked two years ago. I think there could be benefits potentially, particularly to the part of the policy that says if someone would serve, if appointment to a three-year term would push them beyond six. So that means someone who was appointed for one year and then gets a three-year term, they don't get that preference anymore for the next three-year term under how we've written it, per se, because that would, that three-year term would push them beyond six, even though they've only served four when they might be seeking reappointment. So I think there are some benefits other than just consistency to consider. Potential changes to this policy related, relating to the limit of six years. I had hesitated to answer the other questions. I'd hesitated to propose a actual term limit to the president. So I chose this way, eliminating sort of artificial term limits to where we appoint bodies instead of adding a term limit to a different appointment process.
Anna.
It's been very interesting listening to some of the concerns and critiques here because they, some of them are, are the exact opposite of my reading and interpretation of this. Um, and so I just wanted to share my concerns with this and, and kind of just my thoughts. So I would rather see this as a rule change focusing on the, um, the council and thinking about term limits. I know that what's referenced in the memo is the presidency, but also if we think about chairing committees and who gets the experience of that, uh, and, and other, other experiences that require learning curves. I think that we should be thinking about what we need to build into our structure to support, uh, changes in who sits in those roles regularly in order to support people learning how to do them. I said as much when I chose not to run for vice president this year, right? We need to make sure that folks know how to do multiple things on these bodies. That said, I think Jennifer, it was so interesting to hear your comment because I took this the exact opposite way. I saw this as actually taking away, uh, the ability a bit for new folks to come in who don't have the experience. And this opens up the door for experience on a committee, specifically experienced serving on that committee, to be weighted far more than I think it necessarily should be for the health of that body. So I read these sentences as saying, if someone new is coming in and someone has been sitting on that board for 12 years, we should give that new person a chance because it's deleting that framing. If a member has served six consecutive years, uh, and there are other qualified applicants, preference will be given to the other applicants. What that sentence is doing is saying, if new people come in and they are qualified, they should get preference. The caveat of if special training or expertise, expertise is required, longer periods of service may be appropriate, isn't relevant if you get rid of that first sentence. So I understand why that's crossed out. My concern about this is that it would, in my mind, it hinders our ability to bring in new people. I think that when we start looking at boards and we start valuing experience on that board as the main drag, nine times out of 10, you're going to go with the person who's done the job for four years, right? Versus someone who says, well, I'm going to take a year to learn it. But how are we going to get, continue to get healthy membership on these boards with diverse views, with new folks coming in if we aren't supporting them in that process? So I don't support this going forward because I feel like the addition, those two sentences, those three sentences, excuse me, do something very powerful, uh, in supporting new people stepping up to the plate. And, uh, I, I think that a stronger case is to be made for adding in sentences like that in other places throughout the council's work.
Counselor Ette.
If I have this correctly, the town council is not making a vote to adopt this change. It is simply to recommend that it go to GOL.
That is correct.
If that is the case, I would be in favor of this, not because I think the change is good, but because I relish the opportunity to have a discussion on what would be beneficial to the community in terms of the people that could go on these bodies. I do think that a stronger case would have been made if consistency was not the reason that was given, but the reason that we just heard at this meeting. So I would be in favor of having it come to GOL since there's already a discussion on multi-member bodies, so it wouldn't be a waste of time.
Kathy.
The reason I would vote against referral is that I think GOL has a lot of substantive, uh, issues before, including we're missing a member on the finance committee, a resident member. And if, we do not think it's basically a good idea, taking time for five people to talk about it and bring it back to us, doesn't make sense to me. So I have, in the past, said, go ahead and refer, but I think this is a moment where if the majority of us think this is not a good change and, uh, the juxtaposition of the president's terms and these two incredibly important bodies doesn't, doesn't make sense to me, then I think there's no reason to refer it. I think GOL has a lot of work on its plate and it, the more focused, the better.
Bob Hegner.
As someone who's served both as a resident member and an elected member of the finance committee, I think that it's, your, one's experience is very different when you're a resident member than if, when you're an elected member. When you're an elected member, you have to think about, um, the specifics of, in my case, the, the district, but also the town itself. When you're a resident member, you, you tend to think only about the town and you don't think about the district, um, if you're a district member. So it's a little bit different and I think, um, there's really no limit for someone to be on the, someone who's an elected member to be on a particular committee. There is however, I take what Anna has said and, and there is, I think it's especially when you're talking about resident members, um, you do want to open, open up to new membership because people who have been in a, on a committee for a certain period of time, have a certain fixed way of thinking about things. And it's important to open it up to other people who bring fresh perspectives. So I, 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 I understand the, the spirit of this, um, request, but I, I think I would, I'll vote against it because I think we're really mixing up resident members and elected members, and I, I, I think they're very different.
Are there any other comments? The motion's been made and seconded. We'll move to a vote. Pam Rooney.
No.
George Ryan.
No.
Kathy Shane.
No.
Andy Steinberg.
No.
Jennifer Taub.
No.
Alicia Walker.
No.
Pat DeAngelis.
No.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
No.
Counselor Ette.
Yes.
Counsel, Lynn Griesmer is an no. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
No.
The motion fails. Uh, I'm sorry, I missed, I jumped over. Counselor Lord.
No.
Thank you. I'm very sorry about that. Uh, there were 11 in, two in favor and 11 opposed. Correct, George? Thank you. All right. Uh, we're going to move on to, uh, we've done appointments. We're going to move to committee and liaison reports. Uh, CRC, Pam Rooney and Jennifer Taub.
Uh, the CRC has met regularly since January 14th, uh, and it re-elected Pam Rooney as chair and Jennifer Taub as vice chair. On February 20th, so just last week, we adopted our 2025 calendar and that was sent to the clerk of the council. So that should be, um, helping position different, uh, committees across the board. On February 28th, CRC, uh, closed the public hearing on the proposed Article 7 University Drive overlay district, um, which was generated by the planning board and with much input from the town staff. The bylaw was unanimously voted to recommend that the council approve and adopt it. It has, uh, since then been sent to the town attorney for review and will end up in GOL's, um, heavily burdened table, um, relatively soon, I hope. The CRC is resuming discussion of the solar bylaw, which came to the CRC in December of 2023.
Elementary school building committee, Kathy Shane and Alicia Walker and Paul are the members there. Kathy, you're chair.
We haven't met since, uh, the county, we met, we're only meeting once a month. So we'll be meeting, um, the third, uh, March, whatever the Friday is, I'll be more clear on that. The one thing I think I already reported last week or last time we met, we are expecting, uh, in March, that people are going to start seeing the erection of the, the framework of the school still going up. So it's going to become more, uh, visible. And the town staff, along with people who are on the ground, are going to try to figure out how to, uh, to arrange visits over time so people can feel that there is a real building, including the occupants of the elementary schools.
Okay. Did you say that you're meeting on March 8th, maybe? March.
Be sure it's the 14th, but I'll have to get back to you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, finance committee, Kathy Shane and Bob Hegner is vice chair. Kathy.
You, you had the report. Our major, uh, focus was banks. Next week, on March 4th, we will get the second quarter report on the town's finances and we'll discuss, um, a potential way of meeting when we're reviewing the budget in May. Those will be the two major items on the agenda.
Okay. Um, Jones Library Committee, Pam Rooney, Paul.
The last time the Jones Library Building Committee met, it was essentially to entertain, um, session number two of the section 106, uh, review, uh, for historic preservation. And, uh, there has been very little in terms of actual discussion of pros and cons of any of the, any of the alternatives that are being suggested. So the building committee has not weighed in on, on anything. Nor have we had updates as a building committee on any of the financing and/or, uh, progress being made on, on donations. So we still don't have a very clear picture of the financial situation.
Tell Kathy.
Lynn, I just, the next meeting of elementary school is March 24th. We meet at 12:30 on Friday.
Thank you.
Point of order.
Yes.
Madam President, you skipped over GOL.
I'm so sorry. You're correct. I did.
It's all right.
And I don't mean to do that. GOL, Anna Devlin-Gothier, Gothier has been elected chair and Counselor Ette is vice chair. Anna.
Thank you. So GOL did meet, we, um, did, uh, proclamation for clarity, consistency and actionability. And we talked about the upcoming items on GOL's calendar. And then because I'm so used to GOL being on Thursdays and not Tuesdays, I forgot that you have to, the 48-hour posting rule is weekdays, not weekends. So, uh, GOL will not be meeting tomorrow as we were supposed to because, uh, I can't read a calendar, apparently. And, um, we, I'm still trying to figure out with members of the committee how to make up that meeting, um, while still having folks obviously there. Upcoming meetings will include, the most urgent matter is getting the process going for the replacement for the resident members on FinCom as well as the, uh, absent member on the charter review committee. We'll also be tackling liaisons and, um, the AHRA successor body charge as some of our first items, as well as whatever fun things come to us from other committees and the council.
Counselor Hanke, I didn't see your hand up. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm up for GOL.
Okay.
Um, it's sort of a follow-up to the University Drive CRC report, but, um, if, I would like to know when GOL intends to take up University Drive. I guess I, it, it's not necessarily when it tends to take it up, but is GOL aware and are they making sure they will have time that the council must vote within 90 days of CRC's close of the hearing, which was January 28th? So the council must vote and have both readings done by April 28th. And so it needs to be out of GOL in time for the April 7th meeting at the latest. And just a reminder to make sure that is on track to do that.
And we are, what, what's holding us up is we're waiting for legal review.
Yeah. So sorry, if, if I may, Lynn, GOL has not received it yet, Mandy. And I appreciate you clearly writing out those deadlines for us. We, once we receive it, it will be priority because of those deadlines. And if we have to put meetings on to get it there, that's what we'll have to do. But we don't have it yet. So even if we were meeting tomorrow, we don't have it to discuss.
Okay. I guess the follow-up is done with Paul. Um, when will GOL have it?
I know the town attorney's been looking at it and has had conversations with the, uh, staff. So I, I, I think they're trying to get it through this week.
Okay, great. So I'll plan to answer your question, Mandy. I'll plan to put it on the first meeting where I don't break a posting deadline as soon as I receive it, is my plan.
Okay. Um, thanks. Uh, so now I am up to TSO. Andy, I believe you were just re-elected chair and George as vice chair.
Yes, thank you. You've received our written report, so I, as usual, don't want to repeat what's in there, but to supplement it on a couple of matters and otherwise be available for questions about where we are. One of the two updates that I was going to give is that I said in the report that we were trying to schedule something with the people from Northampton, Alex Jarrett, who's chair, who's president of the council and a member of their Transportation and Parking Commission and the director of the Department of Public Works, who chairs their commission. And it has now been firmed up for March 6th meeting at, that they will attend at 11:00 AM. So if you have any questions, because it is a committee meeting, but if you have any questions that you think are particularly important to ask people who are involved with another commission, don't hesitate to forward them to me or to George, and we will assure that that they get raised. The other thing that I wanted to add is that in our future meeting discussion, when we were listing topics that need to be discussed, one of the things was that when the mini roundabouts were agreed to for Heatherstone Road, it was, it was put forward as an experiment with the type of traffic calming that we had never had in Amherst before. And that it would be reviewed. And we did talk about that very briefly. And TSO will be sponsoring some type of a public listening session probably in May. And that we will be trying to seek broad input and then see if we have a recommendation to make that to the council. And we will work with the counselors in District 2 as far as organizing that session.
Thank you for including those of us in District 2 since we hear about this regularly. Bob?
I would like to hear from JCPC and the BCG. They're not on here.
Uh, I will thank you for pointing that out and I'll include that. Kathy?
Yes, I, I did read the TSO report, which was excellent as usual, and I note, noted that you talk about the potential changes in intersections by the Fort River School. And a sentence jumped out at me that it would be good for the council to come up with a preferred solution so we could move forward rather than leaving it in the air. And I very much welcome that coming to the full council. So I think trying to schedule that, the, the, the discussion that was written up is it's gotten more narrow, which is good. We can't have all, all possibilities. And one of the things that may come as a segue to Bob asking to hear about JCPC is a proposal from DPW for engineering study on it. But I don't want us to spend a lot of engineering study money on a non-preferred solution. So tried to come up at least with a framework so that we could be ready to secure state grants and move forward because there are grants for intersections near schools. So I just, I'm requesting that that come to the council and as an agenda item.
Would you please, yeah, thank you, if you would send that to me specifically in an email. Thank you. So let's go to JCPC, and Kathy, you are chairing JCPC.
Yes, we meet on Wednesdays at four o'clock. So we will be meeting this Wednesday. And the one set of proposals we'll have are on IT, so we don't have a long list yet. So we, we right now do not have, because they haven't been ready, a full list of potential projects for the next fiscal year. So there will be potentially at this meeting some idea of when each of the major groups will be seen by JCPC, but I don't have that yet.
Okay, are there questions regarding JCPC? Counselor Hanke?
It seems that that might be slightly behind right now, and I'm not putting any blame to JCPC. I want to make clear that. My question is, do you as chair believe you still have time to do everything you normally do and get the report done by April 1?
The frank answer is no, but one of the possibilities is if we're meeting weekly, do we have a longer meeting to cover, to do catch-up? Because we, we don't have as many weeks as we would normally have before we have to get a final report. So we, we need, it's a, as everyone here I think knows, we make a recommendation to the town manager that then goes into his coming up with the proposed CIP plan. And that's due on May 1st, so we have to get our recommendation in at least a few, at least a week earlier. I mean, the, the town is following what we're talking about, so it won't be a surprise what we end up talking about, but we, we're going to be pressed for time.
George, you have your hand up?
I think Kathy just answered my question. You're meeting weekly. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, the only other thing, Andy, Mandy, is if the delay means that when the set of projects comes, the budget is nearly balanced, there will be less that we have to do. Last year it was about, the initial set of proposals was about $3 million more than the money we had to spend. So we had to really juggle back and forth. So it is a question of, you know, maybe there's catch-up time if it comes more, more near. And it's, the request has been not just for the next year, FY '26, but near balance for the next four years. Like there's a plan for the five years.
You also asked about BCG. And I, there is a summary of the BCG meeting that I included in my president's report. I'm more than glad to submit a whole separate report. It just happened to throw it in here. And I, let me just say that Anna Devlin-Gothier is also on BCG. Counselor Hanke and Andy Steinberg are on BCG along with myself. We are now working on scheduling our next meeting to be on Wednesday. This literally just happened today. Wednesday, the 5th at 2:00. Is that right, Paul? No.
At, at 12:00 noon.
Okay.
Because JCPC makes it four, so just to give a little bit of a break.
How long is that meeting intended to go?
Twelve to two. Scheduled.
Okay. Thank you. And just very quickly, during the last BCG meeting, which included representatives from the library, Nate Larson and Austin Sret, although Austin was not able to be there, it include members from the Elementary School Committee, Deb Leonard, who's vice chair and her roads, and the Regional School Committee, Tillman Wolf, and then also the superintendent was there as well as Sharon Sherry and Paul and Melissa and I think even Holly was there. The, we did look at the latest budget projections of 3.5%. We looked at the health insurance, which at that time was still at 19.92. It sits down below 16. We talked about the state aid based on House 1, and basically it's, it's almost a wash. And we did review a little bit of the implementation of the town council budget guidelines, which allowed us to get 3.5%. Each of the member bodies made comments. There was a request for, to meet more regularly. And during the next agenda item, the items that I have listed are a discussion of capital for the towns. This would include the recent financial model for the major capital projects. And possibility of an override for the schools. And then also free cash. And what does it mean and how do we get there? And the third item, fourth item was, where do we really stand on the issue of school consolidation, transition plans and budget gaps regarding moving from three to two elementary schools, the sixth grade to wherever it's going to go, and the seven to 12 high school? Okay? Are there questions on that? Are there any other comments from other members? One of the things that I think we're feeling a little bit of tension between is the extent to which this is duplicative of both finance meetings and council, but it's, it's also a learning opportunity for various groups. Are there any other committee reports? And before I move on to liaison reports? Okay, are there any liaison reports? Pat?
Yeah, just a quick note about the Disability Access Advisory Committee. They are, as you know, planning to become a commission and we're still waiting to get a proposed charge brought forward so that we can look at it. The other thing, they, at their last meeting in the beginning of February, they voted unanimously to change the name of the potential commission from the Disability Access Advisory Commission to the People with Disabilities Commission. And I support that because it comes from them. But we really need to see something tangible as soon as possible.
Okay. Counselor Ette?
Yeah, I was just wondering regarding liaisons, if there is a switch whenever we have the new year?
The first process that has to happen is it has to go to GOL. GOL has to recommend to the council which committees we're recommending have liaisons. And then hopefully at the same meeting, we would also then have counselors decide who they would like to be, who would like to be liaisons to those committees. Meantime, what has been really helpful is people who have been liaisons to the existing set of committees have continued to do that. Does that help you?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments with regard to committees? We did not have minutes. Paul, there's no written report, but do you have some comments?
I do. Thank you. So first, on the Elementary School Building Committee, it's meeting on March 14th, not the 24th. I think that's just a, so it's a Friday afternoon. The second is for Counselor DeAngelis, the Commission, Commission on Persons with Disabilities, that charge is completed and has been shared with the chair and I think with all the members of the DAAC, and they've been asked if they would like to continue. And as they submit their names, we will be forwarding their appointment names to you, to the council for their confirmation. So that is nearing completion.
Thank you. They didn't let me know that.
I'll share it. I'll share it with the full council. One of the commenters earlier on talked about the fire at, on Pond you, and I think that's, she made a very important point about the hydrants not being cleared out and that's a, you know, sometimes it's not possible for a homeowner, but if, if homeowners, homeowners have the ability, it's really important for you to dig out your hydrant and make sure there's a nice path around it. What happens is when they are covered with snow, they freeze up. And when they're not covered with snow, the sun gets on them and they, they're easier to, to manipulate and open up. And they were, they had to go to a second hydrant and really had to force that one open. We do exercise the hydrants during the course of the year. You'll see them out there flushing hydrants periodically. But they can freeze up. The weather is just not something that we can control. I also want to publicly thank the Northampton, Hadley, Belchertown Fire Departments who all responded to the scene along with all of our firefighters. We also want to thank Palms Fire, Fire Department for providing station coverage during the course of the evening and South County ambulance who came into town to respond to one of our medical emergencies. And this was at 4:00 AM on Saturday morning, just so you're alert to that. And it was just a, a neighbor who happened to be awake and saw the fire going that, that made it work. And I just, and to frame it out for you, I think it's really important to understand. So, you know, we have fire, fire and police are first on the scene. We all recognize that. But in the course of the morning, on that Sunday morning, we also had inspections, you know, electrical and building department there. We had the water department there because there was water flooding into the basement. They had to get the cutoff, the shut-off. They had to dig, you know, try to locate the shut-off in the yard, dig this through the snow and, and they sort of just were really good at finding where that was so they could shut the water off. And then, of course, when you're throwing a bunch of water on a, on a building site, it freezes up and it floods the street. So DPW has to then come in and, you know, clear the, clear the road as best they can and, and salt it. It's because this fires in these very cold weather is really challenging. And we also were, and recognize the state that delivered its rehab truck, which is a, a place for people to get warm and things like that during the course of the evening. So we, we always think, oh, our firefighters did great, but it really is a lot of people who are responding in real time and just want to thank all of our staff who were out there in bitter cold weather and we're just so thankful that there were no casualties in that. And when they got there, they did not know if someone was in the building or not. And they were really, literally doing, crawling into the building, which is their protocol. So you don't step on something and fall through the floor, which is what would have happened had they not followed their, their professional protocol crawling into the building and finding out what was going on. So just well-trained, super responsive, community participation from other communities, cities and towns and all hands on deck for this. So it just, it's one fire in a relatively small home. And then that family has lost everything. So it's a tragedy, but I really admire how our team has responded to that. So, and then on the Jones Library, a couple of things. So have submitted a request for, and I sent it to you, that request for a 30-day extension from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. The reason that has happened in the letter is more explanatory is that we are still continuing through the Section 106 review process. And there is a draft memorandum of understanding that's been drafted, that's been shared with all of the participants. There were seven, seven consulting parties submitted comments on the draft. There are 17 signatories to this agreement. So there's a process that has to go through for people to sign. But it, it, there is a draft that Mass Historical Commission is reviewing and so all the, all the key part parties are involved with. And I just want to thank Bob Parent, who's been sort of honchoing, honchoing this, this whole process. It's very complex and he's done really a professional job every step of the way. And the last thing I went to mention was the, so this week we started our liberatory visioning project with Dr. Barbara Love. And this is an opportunity for the community to engage in dialogue about it's a, they're hybrid, where, where residents will have to, their ability to share their thoughts, experiences, ideas about creating more equitable community. It really is about creating the kind of community we want to create in our community. It's, you know, we want it to be equitable. We want it to be fair. We want to be inclusive. So there are three sessions coming up. One is this Thursday, February 27th from 6:00 to 7:30. And this is in the classroom and the Banks Community Center. There's another one. The second one is on Wednesday, March 5th from 5:00 to 6:30 in the cafeteria of the Amherst Regional Middle School. And the third one is Wednesday, March 12th from 5:00 to 6:30 in the town room at Town Hall. And these are all available either in person, which we always prefer, or else via Zoom as well because, so people can participate. So credit to our DEI department who has organized this and has secured funding so that Dr. Love can be participating in this. They spent the last, was it last night? Or maybe last week where they're training the trainers, basically. So there's a lot of work going into these events. So I just really encourage people to participate if they, if they're able to. So that's it, that's it for, for now.
Counselor Ryan, you have your hand up?
I just wanted to go back to the fire for just a second. I was wondering what role, if any, the town plays in follow-up. But we heard that the family was obviously up. They've lost their home. Is there any role for the town in, in terms of reaching out to them or anything we can do as a town? Or do we do?
Yeah. So the, the town itself doesn't do that then. Well, I think the neighborhood is very strong neighborhood and they've collected gift cards and things like that. The typical response is that the Red Cross comes in and provides temporary housing and funding for them. So that's why, you know, when you see fundraisers for the Red Cross, they do good things like this for every community. It's not just major disasters. It's all kinds of disasters. They have the resources. They have the connections. They have all kinds of assets that, that a small town like ours could never maintain on a regular basis. But they are there as quickly as, as, as first responders in many cases.
So in this case, that did happen. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, the Red Cross took care of their housing.
Thank you.
Uh, Bob Hegner? Bob Hegner?
Yeah, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the fire department and everyone who was involved in this particular incident. The weather was the worst one, at that time, was the worst winter weather I've seen in my 24 years in town. So it was awful. And for them to be able to get to that site, fight that fire in professional manner is just amazing. So thank you all for doing that.
Agreed. Are there any other questions or comments of the town manager? Okay, just. You have a written president's report. There were various meetings and I tried to summarize them to the best of my ability. George Ryan was at all of those meetings except the one with the bid and chamber because it coincided with TSO. But we've now moved the time of that meeting so that George will be able to attend that as well. Are there any questions on the president's report? Jennifer?
Yes, could you expand a bit on the bottom of page four, where you're talking about CREST? And the governor's proposal?
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that because I think what I wrote might be misleading. The governor has consistently not included CREST in House One. And it's always been done as an amendment to, by Senator Comerford and Joe Comerford. And they will do that again this year. Okay? Yeah. Any other questions?
I just clarified. So it's not, there's no funding for CREST in the state budget. It's a funding for a program called EEPs, which is Equitable Approaches to Public Safety. It's a competitive grant that Northampton and Amherst have been successful at receiving. So this impacts about seven or eight different communities in the Commonwealth who are, have been, who've been, received these grants. So there is, it's not just Amherst who's looking for the funding. There's a lot of other communities as well.
Right.
But it doesn't impact, we still budget for CREST.
We do. Yes, yes. What happened? Okay. Future agenda items, let me just mention on the 10th. This is what I presently have on the docket. And I have also sent a list to people and I have gotten some responses back, but I have not been able to incorporate all of those in. But we do have a poll hearing on the 10th. We're hoping to do something with regard to the DPW EMS Fire Building Committee charge. I don't think University Drive overlay will be ready because of the discussion we just had earlier. But I do see us having U Drive on both March 24th and April 7th, which allows us to meet the deadline that was, that's been discussed. There's three things that Counselor Hanke has submitted and will put them on the March 10th agenda unless something arises and makes it too much. One is a proposed acceptance of statute enabling Amherst to install and operate school bus violation detection monitoring systems. A second is a proposed bylaw outlining outlawing public urination. And the third is a proposed adoption of local option changes for veteran property tax exemptions pursuant to the HERO Act. And there's a town manager report. So that's what I have at this point. Again, because Athena was not able to weigh in, there might be other issues that I just haven't remembered here. Bob?
Yeah, what are we going to take up the percent for art by law for the elementary?
That would be also on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. Kathy?
If you have planning space, and I appreciate that you've been planning so we don't go till midnight. I would like to get the discussion TSO presenting on Southeast Street Intersections.
Got it.
It sounds like we might have room on March 10th.
Okay. That's what you mentioned earlier. Thank you so much. Are there any other requests? Andy?
I just wanted to, on what Kathy just brought up, I can't be certain that we will be ready. I think we have to wait until after this next TSO meeting. Because the first half of the agenda will be to continue the discussion on that before we switch over talking with Northampton about Transportation Parking Commission. Those are the two items on our next agenda significance. There has, we need a lot of information from DPW before we really feel ready to bring forward a discussion to the council. I don't think that rushing the discussion will make for a better discussion.
Okay. We'll keep going back and forth and see what comes. Anything else? Any other items? Are there any other counselor comments? Counselor Hannah, Patty, no, Andy, you have your hand up first. Patty Angeles?
Thank you. I would like to make two announcements about upcoming boycotts. On February 28th, there is a proposed No Spending Day, which is going to be nationwide. Consumers are rallying to speak through their wallets as a way to protest the retreat by some companies from diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives and President Donald Trump's actions to eliminate federal DEI programs since taking office. They are calling consumers to not participate or spend money that day. But they're encouraged not to spend money in stores or online for the whole day. And if emergencies are essentials, that they support a small local business to get those. The other boycott is happening March 7th through March 14th. And it's a boycott of Amazon as a way to protest their extreme tax avoidance, their mistreatment of workers and squashing of unions, the fact that they have slave labor in their supply chain, their refusal to reduce or address their carbon footprint, their decimating of small businesses, the squeezing of suppliers and sellers, and search results and enabling unsafe and expired merchandise to be sold and their other issues. So that's March 7th through the 14th. I'm going to ask everyone on the council and every resident in Amherst to participate in the No Spending Day that starts February 27th at midnight and goes through the 28th at midnight. Please, we need to find ways to resist what's going on. We have to resist the new normal. And this is just the beginning of a way to do that.
Anna?
I wanted to publicly extend my thanks to DPW and our DPW staff, who have been so incredibly overloaded the past few weeks with all the weather events that are happening. I went to load it up my trusty buckets and went to DPW the other day to get sand. Which, by the way, DPW has sand. Bring a bucket. They even have shovels, even though they said bring a shovel, maybe bring it as a backup, but they did have some there. And some of the folks there were just leaving their shift, their shift was ending. And I just asked them, you know, how they were doing, because it had just been icing for like four days. And they, you know, they looked really tired, but they were so kind. And, you know, said that they're just doing everything they can. So I just wanted to publicly express some gratitude because truly they are doing everything they can. And with weather like what we had, even everything they can is never going to be perfect, even if they're as wonderful as they are. So wanted to publicly thank them and for, you know, whoever's still watching this meeting and appreciate them. I think it was the afternoon and they had started work at midnight. So it was the overnight shift folks heading home. Yeah. And I met a neighbor of mine who works there. So that was nice too. Anyway, but thanks.
Thanks for mentioning all of that, Anna. Paul, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'd really appreciate you saying that, Anna, as well. Because, you know, we sort of called this a taco storm where it was snow and then rain and then snow. And it was just really a brutal storm to manage. They worked 36 hours straight on that weekend. And then they were in at midnight last Wednesday and worked a double shift to clear the downtown and move snow out of the way, partially in preparation for fire nights, which was another spectacular event, credit to the Rec Department and to the Business Improvement District. But they were putting a ton of time in. And what's happening is because of the nature of the storm is that you're going to see, you are seeing the roads blow up. You know, they're becoming like gravel pits. And it's until it dries out, which we're hoping this week, we can't repair the roads with, you know, can't fill potholes if they're filled with water. So there's going to be temporary fixes and then more permanent fixes. But, you know, people are really understanding, which we appreciate. And they really do credit the DPW for all the work that they're doing. But that will only go, when you hit a pothole, everybody blows a gasket. So we're trying to get out and doing those as well for our folks. So, but it was really kind of you to mention that.
Thanks. Seeing no other comments, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn, seek a second.
Second.
Thank you. Begin, we have to take a vote. And I believe we begin with Counselor Ryan. Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Patty Angeles?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Goth here?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Greisman?
Aye.
Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
It's unanimous. We're adjourned. It's 8:31.